This meeting of the Independent School District Number 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM Tuesday, January 16th, 2018 in Room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Sussner.
Here.
Ms. Seelinger.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Mr. Munoz.
Yes, tonight we have the pleasure to have the pledge led by the famous Spanish immersion program of Gage Elementary. And we are going to say the pledge in Spanish and then say it in English as well.
Please stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Munoz.
Yes, there is one change to the agenda. Item 7.03, closed session for property, has been removed.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, uh, motion has been approved. That's the second discussion. Announcements and communications, 3.01, high school fundraising activities. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'm gonna have Chris Fogarty, Principal of Century High School, Tim Lindberg, Principal, John Marshall High School, and Tom Olson, Principal, Mail High School, and the student representatives and advisors that are with this group as they're working their way up. That was a hint, thank you. I would like, you know, it, every year it just amazes me, the accomplishments of our students. They raise a lot of money in a two-to-three week window, period of time, and this year the three high schools together raised $124,124 in a very short period of time. So, if we could have each principal or advisor introduce yourself, introduce the students, and then if you could share with us, um, maybe some of the things that you did to raise this money.
We defer to the students.
Okay. All right. What student, what, what school wants to go first?
Oh, okay.
Come up to the microphone.
Either sit or stand, whatever you're comfortable doing.
But you gotta talk to the microphone.
That works, got it, all right. So, I'm from John Marshall High School, my name is Tracy Peterson. Um, I'm part of the student council there, and one of the things we did is a flag football game between junior and senior girls, so, super ferocious, we did it on a really cold November night, and we raised money for the Christmas Anonymous organization, so, yeah.
Thank you. And I forgot to, if you could also share what you did, share what this were, who you're donating the money to. So, you did Christmas Anonymous, thank you.
All right, I'm Harmon Preet Cor, I'm from Century High School. Some things that we did at Century was we had an international fashion show as well as a potluck, we had man of the century, so it was like a little pageant thing, and, um...
And who do you donate to?
Oh, we donate to Bear Creek and Paws and Claws.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mae from Mayo High School. Uh, what?
You can stand up.
Okay, cool, all right. Cool. So, we do GOFa, which stands for Give One for All, and, um, this year we did a ton of stuff, but some of our biggest fundraisers are team sports, so people can get together dodgeball team, and we'll have a dodgeball tournament, um, like JM, we also did, um, a girls' powder buff game, um, but yeah, it's really just kind of the spirit of GOFa, not just the money, that's crucial to add to school spirit, um, and yeah, we give our money to the Dorothy Day House and the Women's Shelter.
Anybody else would like to share anything? The advisors? Any other students?
I think the coolest thing about these fundraisers is that we all come together as a community. Honestly, like, it's kind of a fun competition between a lot of the schools, but in the end, we raised a whole ton of money, and that elevates our entire community, therefore, I mean, okay. So, cheers to all the schools for all the hard work they put in. It's a lot of work that, like, teachers and advisors, shout out to you guys, you don't have to do any of this, and like, it means a lot to the students, and you a lot of times don't get those thank yous, um, so I wanna give you that thank you, um, on behalf of student body of Mayo High School, even though our advisor couldn't make it tonight, but, yeah.
Yeah, I think sometimes in our society, kids get criticized for not doing good things and thinking of themselves, but, you know, one of the things I noticed seven years ago coming to Rochester is that our students aren't that way, and tonight we're talking about high school kids, but even at the elementary, middle school, they do a variety of fundraising activities for different, uh, things going on in our community, and, and I'm just really impressed every year that you, you don't think of yourselves, you think how can we better our community and help our community, and, and it, like I said, it just amazes me how much money you can raise in a short period of time, but you're doing, uh, you're giving back to your community, and, uh, I think that's, that's very special and not something that all high school kids really think about, so thank you for that.
3.02, 2017-2018 VFW post 1215 Patriots Penn Essay Contest Winners. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'd like to call Colleen Loy, she's the advisor, and the students that, um, are here as well, which doesn't look good. Okay, um, we will move on.
I bet those essays were outstanding. Okay, 3.03, Operation Hometown. Mr. Munoz.
Okay, and I didn't see, unless he's in the back, Gary, oh, there you are, Gary, I didn't see you back there. Gary, I'm gonna call you up and, and talk a little bit about Operation Hometown, and I think you have some students with you as well?
Yep. I'll put them on the spotlight. They're, uh, they're terrified. We just got done packing tonight, and I'll just have them, uh, each say one thing. We've sent, since 2005, we've sent, uh, about 18,000 care packages to deployed soldiers, uh, men and women, and, uh, um, you know, it reinforces, uh, you know, what I've seen from the fundraising here, if you wanna get teens involved in, uh, service, uh, make sure they have fun, and it's pretty easy for teens to have fun, and if they do that, uh, they're gonna do good things. So, um, first best question, you go up there, uh, we work closely with the Blue Star Moms, and, uh, they are mothers that have children that are, have been deployed, what do we call them?
Um, we call them the BS Moms, it's, uh, yeah, it's kind of a joke he told us.
It's, uh, um, they're kinda like moms to my kids, and, uh, they bring us pizza, you know, 'cause we take care of their kids and then they take care of our kids, so, what'd you spend today at the Dollar Tree?
Turn up to the mic.
Tell them.
Today we spent like, what was it, like, $875 at the Dollar Tree today, restocking up supplies that, so we can pack the boxes and send them overseas.
They like to set the Dollar Tree. Guys, can you tell them what's our, uh, record at the Dollar Tree?
My freshman year, about three years ago, we spent about thirty, almost $3,800 at the Dollar Tree.
We have the, uh, we have the receipt lining, uh, the room. So, uh, thanks for inviting us.
Yep, thank you, Gary, and, and, again, just another example of how our students are giving back and, uh, our community and really, uh, supporting, uh, individuals from our community who are protecting our country, so, uh, that's a, a great, and I know it's been going on for quite some time, and, uh, we appreciate Gary and the efforts of all the students, so, thank you.
3.04, Spanish immersion program. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Nicole, I'll have you come up and then you can introduce your team, and, uh, we're gonna learn a little bit about, we heard the Spanish immersion students pledge tonight, we're gonna hear more about the program. Okay, we'll get it up there in just a minute here.
Ms. Bergerson, I'm assuming you'll be doing the presentation in Spanish, right?
Yeah, if you wanna go ahead and maybe introduce everybody while we're waiting for the PowerPoint.
Nicole Bergerson.
Pauline Ness, kindergarten.
Mayun Spedman, first grade.
Vanessa Stensgaard, first grade.
Amber Henry, second grade.
Nikela Burak, third grade.
Meloria Torres Karvik, third grade.
You're not gonna do it in Spanish? Well...
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Nicole Bergerson, la directora of Gage Elementary School.
Si.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Munoz, cabinet members, my name is Nicole Bergerson, and I am the principal at Gage Elementary School. My first introduction, um, was in Spanish, and the culmination of four years of Spanish instruction and classes for myself, two years in high school and two years in college, although I can speak, read, and write in Spanish, my conversational Spanish is relatively nonexistent, however, that is not the case, um, for the kindergarten through third grade students at Gage Elementary School. They spend their days reading, writing, and speaking, and conversing with each other and their teachers in Spanish. Tonight I'm here with six of my teachers in the Spanish immersion program, and we will prove, be presenting an overview of our Spanish, uh, program at Gage with a culminating video of our students for all of you. The PowerPoint's still not working, but...
There it is, all right.
There it was. Think it's the other way.
We're gonna start with a little bit of background about, um, our Spanish immersion program. Um, it began in 2014-15 school year, and currently we offer grades K through 3, um, it's part of the district-wide options program. Um, our teachers instruct the majority of the day in Spanish, the classroom teachers instruct in Spanish and reading, math, social studies, and science, and the students have special area classes in English. Um, there's licensed elementary teachers proficient in Spanish and English, and it covers the same curriculum and holds the same standards as the rest of our 311 registered schools. Um, the benefits of the immersion program, um, there's some research that indicates, um, what immersion programs do for students, and so I highlighted three of those things on today, 'cause there's lots of words on the screen. Um, research indicates that students in immersion programs outperform students in traditional foreign language classes in speaking, listening, reading, and writing skills, um, that students demonstrate cultural sensitivity, they're more cognizant and show positive attitudes towards other cultures, and at the bottom there that, um, surpass, they surpass students in English-only programs at about fifth grade, and by high school they outperform English-only students on academic outcomes measured, and that, of course, we're waiting to see. Um, the implementation plan, just to, um, remind, um, people of our plan, is that next year we will add fourth grade, and the year after we'll add fifth, so we will be a fully functioning immersion program at the elementary school. We have two sections of Spanish at every grade level, um, and so we'll be adding another two sections next year in fourth grade. And the consistency and training of the program, um, our teachers are trained in, at the Center for Advanced Research and Language Acquisition through the Nervousity of Minnesota, the CARLA training, um, all of the teachers who are hired at Gage are trained through CARLA, and then they also use the American Council on Teachers for Foreign Language, the ACTFOL for proficiency benchmarks for the students in the program, so that's the consistency in all of the grade levels.
And to give you a better idea of the ACTFOL proficiency benchmarks, we have some visuals that you can look at. The upside-down sort of cone is a visual, uh, in order to help you understand sort of the progression of language development, so you can imagine when you come in at a novice low, the very bottom, you can progress relatively rapidly up to novice mid and novice high, and the farther up you get, the more difficult it is to surpass the level, so, we go from novice low all the way to distinguished, which would be about a PhD level, which, although someday we hope none of our kids will reach during our K through 5 program at Gage, and then on the bottom of part of the screen you'll see a, uh, lateral graphic that we will use throughout our presentation, it starts at a novice low where our students enter, and each of the letters, low, mid, high, continues through intermediate, advanced, and superior, so keep an eye on that as our students progress through K through 3, um, so it'll be a lot of growth in beginning, a little bit growth in higher grades, and then the middle graphic is where it says novice mid, it's just one of the tools that we might use to help evaluate the language of our students, or the language progression. For example, I can say hello and go bye, goodbye to someone my age or younger, some of you might be thinking that's all I can do in Spanish, some of our third graders will be able to, um, perform a lot higher than expressing a polite reaction to something such as "great," so keep an eye on that as well.
Okay, so, uh, in kindergarten, we stay in Spanish all the time, so, once you step over that threshold, I am in Spanish 100% of the time, so it's pretty cute, they come in, um, really, uh, most of them don't know anything, and, and, and they'll tell me that too, so the kids, uh, respond a lot in English, so I get a lot of, "I have no idea what you're telling me." "I don't know what's going on in here," and so, as you can imagine, if, there's a lot of funny things that happen in my classroom, so, um, what I, what we have noticed is that, um, that just tends to be an additional challenge for kindergarteners, because it's, again, they're for school experience, and it's a whole day, and now nobody, I don't even understand what people are telling me. So, um, it's a nice challenge, but we keep in mind that growth mindset all the time, and the kids really are good about it, and, um, really helping each other out. So, I use a lot of, uh, songs, we sing a lot in, throughout our day in kindergarten, and I try to just, um, use a lot of gestures, signals, so that they start to learn the routines, and some common phrases and questions that will help them get through their day. Um, typically, there's been a couple of native speakers, so they kind of really help lead the way, and then the others can follow, but, pretty quick, they're, they're catching on to everything, so, um, the processing happens in Spanish, so that's really amazing to me, how quick, even in the first couple of days, when I'm speaking to them in Spanish, but at this rate of speed, at a natural rate of speed, and they're taking it all in, and then they turn around and answer me in English. So, they're staying in English, but they are taking all of that in, in Spanish, so it's, it's just pretty awesome, what they can really do. And even in the first couple of days, I'll get kids already, um, just trying a little bit, so they're, "I need to go to the baño," you know, and they just throw it in wherever they can, one, one little word that they hear, and then they're gonna try to use it, so they, that's what we call code switching, and so they, um, will mix their English and Spanish together. Um, there's a lot of, um, really cute ways that they also just support each other, so I remember talking to two little boys, and I'm asking them a question, and they just give me that, you know, deer-in-the-headlights look, and then they look at each other, and then the little boy says, "Tell her "see," and the other one said, "See," and he went out with it. So, they, it's really, really nice, um, environment that they, that I'm working in. Um, and then where that happens, though, with kids speaking or not speaking, that can happen even in the first day of school or the first few weeks, and sometimes I won't hear anything from, till, till January, February, from some of the kids, 'cause they're just really nervous about using it, so. Um, what I do notice is that processing time, like I talked about, as they're taking that all in, that tends to decrease, so I don't see that so much, I've gotta figure out in English what she's saying and then be able to answer her, or be able to answer or do the math problem or something, that tends to get really, really fast, and so I know that they're internalizing that a lot. And then just their use of Spanish just increases, we just keep, really encourage them and really praise it, and they really take off.
And the ACTFOL's at the bottom for you to look at.
Sorry, I forgot. So, they come in at almost nothing, very, very low, and then they should finish kindergarten at a mid-novice level.
First grade, we see last tiers. They, we start the school year and the entire school year, we're in 100% Spanish, 100% of the time, in the classroom with the general education teachers, uh, students understand what we're saying, they remember rather quickly after a bit of a summer slide, that, yes, I am in a Spanish immersion program, and they start to pick up on the things that we're saying, again, remembering from kindergarten. Most of the time, in the beginning of the year especially, they still respond to us in English, um, we start to push them a little bit farther and say, "Hmm, if you know how to say that in Spanish," or, "I think you know how to say that in Spanish." Um, around mid-November, we really encourage them to start speaking more Spanish, and we prepare them for this big change that's coming in December, when our expectations raise even higher, because we know that they're capable of responding to us in Spanish.
So, around the end of December, we start to really push Spanish a little bit more, and, um, one way that we try to get kids to speak in Spanish all day is to remind them that being bilingual is a gift that not everybody has, uh, we try to really celebrate that, look what you can do if you can speak Spanish and English, or even more than that, as is the case with some of our students. Um, so, by around the end of December, we're all speaking Spanish all day long.
And by the end of first grade, there, we expect them to be about an intermediate-mid level, so they've gone through novice, and they're in the middle of intermediate already.
In second grade, on the very first day of school, all students and all staff in our classrooms are at 100% Spanish. Um, there will be some translinguaging, which means sometimes the brain just picks a better word in the other language, and that's what comes out in the middle of a sentence, but most of them can navigate around that. Many ask, "Cómo se dice?" or "How do you say?" at, during that first week of school, but really that adjustment period only lasts about a week, and we really have a strong focus on circumnavigating or explaining their way around the words that they don't know in Spanish. And the thing that's different in second grade is we have the introduction of English in our curriculum, so the goal is to be at 80% Spanish, 20% English by the end of the year, 10% of that is our specials, and that's true for all of our classes in all grade levels. Then second quarter, we start with just 10 minutes of social skills, because we live in a society that speaks English. In third quarter, we increase it by 10 minutes to 20 minutes in our science content whole group lessons. And the reason why we chose science is because that language is very technical, but it also can easily bridge through cognates, like the word observation is observación in Spanish. In fourth quarter, we add 10 more minutes, and then we're at our full 10% of English during the, uh, school year, of, uh, science content, whole group, and independent work, but we allow them the option of whether they want to do English or Spanish during independent time, and the majority of the students will choose Spanish for their independent work. And by the end of the year, they're in between, uh, intermediate-mid and an intermediate-high in their language level.
In third grade, the first three weeks of school are spent in Spanish 100% of the time, the students may experience a small summer slide, and then they, the adjustment period lasts about a week, and they are expected to be speaking only in Spanish and still do a lot of circumnavigating around the words that they don't know, and you can see that they have a lot of confidence in their ability to speak Spanish with one another and with the teacher.
By the third week, and we transition to 730 model, there's, uh, 70% in Spanish, 30% in English, we, um, teach and speak only in Spanish during math class and language arts, and 30% is in science and in social studies, and also in, uh, special times. Uh, by the end of the year, we expect them to be into, into intermediate-high, which is, um, higher level than the students that they are in high school, level four, so, they are very proficient. Um, the next slide, or the next, uh, would be a video that it will show you a little bit about what we do in, at Gage. Thank you.
I should be able to just breathe in? Yeah. Do you want me to start it over? Okay. 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 Okay, we're good.
I have it turned all the way up to the top there. I got nothing. Yeah. I have it turned all the way, I have it turned all the way up in the back. It's all turned up here too.
Can you see my box in the back?
Well, I'm wondering...
Knowledge is our best friend and our worst enemy.
If we're, while we're waiting, I wonder if the board has questions?
Sure, ask away.
Mr. Barlow.
Okay, I have, uh, three questions. Um, the first one deals with parental supports, how do you support the parents, and, uh, the non-Spanish-speaking parents?
Question to ask, and one that our teachers probably can answer very well, um, that's a question that parents ask often when they're coming into our program too, so I'll, I'll let the teachers kind of answer how they support our parents who have those concerns themselves in the program. Somebody wanna start?
Yeah, I'll start. I, um, so, we're reading in kindergarten, and so, usually at the beginning, before I send home the blue bags with the five books, um, they all get the cheat sheet in, for the English families, they get a cheat sheet of how to sound out all the words, and I always tell them, if you can get those five vowel sounds done, it's half the battle in Spanish, so, and then as they progress on, they, um, are working, the packets go home in their blue bag, their reading bag again, so they work on letters, and I just tell the parents how to say that, and then syllables, so we build a lot from syllables in Spanish when we learn how to read, so, that's been helpful. I do, um, two languages in my, like, my newsletters, for monthly newsletters.
I think where the parents start to get a little bit more stressed out is in the higher grades, I was in second grade last year, and their, the kids are starting to advance the chapter books, and the parents say, "You know, I was okay up until now, there were pictures, I could understand what my kids are reading up until now, and now what do I do?" Um, and, and part of our main roles as a teacher in Spanish immersion program is calm the nerves, and say, remember why you put your child in this program, we want them to learn something that we might not know ourselves, um, and we send home comprehension sheets to say, you know, even though your student is reading a language that you might not understand, you can still talk about it in English. I could understand what my kids are reading up until now and now what do I do? And part of our main roles as a teacher in Spanish immersion program is calm the nerves and say, remember why you put your child in this program. We want them to learn something that we might not know ourselves. And we send home comprehension sheets to say, you know, even though your student is reading a language that you might not understand, you can still talk about it in English. They have, they're bilingual. They have two, they have one brain that can produce comprehension in both languages and they can talk to you about the book. So we encourage them to still have those conversations at home about the books that their kids are reading. And we also encourage, we get a lot of questions of, well, should my kid be reading in Spanish or English or do we want to have bedtime stories with them and keep that relationship? And we say, of course, you know, if we want them to be reading independently in Spanish, but if you want to sit and read bedtime's book with, book with them in English, by all means, we're trying to encourage a love of reading, not just a love of Spanish reading. And something else that we see in second grade that Amber might be able to comment on as well is the beginning of testing. And as parents start to get nervous that their kids aren't succeeding at the same rate as their same age level peers in English and their English segments and how did we do something wrong by putting our kids in this program because now we're seeing the scores excel with our, our neighbors and not with our own kids? But then we refer back to that research that tells us that they won't be succeeding at the same level of their peers in English, on those English tests until about fifth grade or even above fifth grade. So we, it's a lot of nerve foam, it's a lot of patience, it's a lot of dedication from both our families and our teachers and our staff and administrators to really believe in the long run of this program and we suggest that it's setting our kids up for in the future.
Okay, then my final, if I may continue. So were any of you previously working in the EL department?
I was, yes. I did one year at Gage in EL.
And I'm just curious as to your experience of dealing with and will you Spanish? Those students who Spanish was their primary language and how, how do the two programs differ?
How does EL versus Spanish immersion?
Right, in terms of what you're doing at Gage.
So with our EL department, we've been really intentional about our native speakers or speakers.
You go have wing spreads 2.5 meters across and use their massive sharp.
I got lucky. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I can finish answering your question, but we're really intentional about, just about how language development is in general because all of these kids who are coming into our program are developing bilingual brains if they don't already have a bilingual brain. And so we really do partner closely with our EL department because SIOP is a great model even within immersion program because for them, it is a foreign language. And, but then for our students who are EL students within the immersion program, they follow the same model as us, withholding off on the literacy component until that English portion is introduced in the classroom. Then they pick up on the literacy. But our EL students are measuring on their access test right along with their peers if not exceeding them. So it's not necessarily an impact on them as EL students.
But I'd quickly add that a huge difference is that these kids are learning general content curriculum in a second language. And a lot of our students, well, our students that are native Spanish speakers imagine the difference of coming into a classroom and being an expert versus being an outsider who gets maybe pulled out for classes and you have to get separated from your peers because it's kind of sense that you have this deficit. In this program, all of our kids look to them as the leaders and that has got to be a great feeling and you can see the pride on their faces when they know a word that their peers don't know. And we don't have to pull them out for this. We're teaching in their language and we, being a language, everybody is a language learner. We constantly talk about how everybody's learning a language and how important that is and how awesome that is. And we're also constantly providing language supports, visuals. It's very, everything is very conscious on our minds, visuals, actions, anything that we can do to help these kids learn language is constantly on our minds, which might, which might not be as natural to a general content future.
And then finally, cohort, as the kids progress through, move into middle school and perhaps are not able to stick together as they are now, are you envisioning, what will their future look like? How do you envision them transitioning into a traditional classroom?
This is a question that, yeah, this is a question that we talk about often, the Spanish immersion teachers and myself, just what that looks like. So we have been in, I've been in contact with the, looking at programs in the Twin Cities that transition from elementary school into middle school, what that looks like because we know the model is different. For an elementary school, we've got one teacher in a classroom with students. And in a middle school, we have multiple teachers that have a student. And so what does the program look like? How many teachers speak in Spanish? Do they all have to be dual language speakers and be bilingual? What that model looks like is different based on the school that, you know, we're looking into too. So the, the, what the program looks like after Gage, we really haven't explored that as an elementary school, but we're looking into what that looks like in other places to see where our kids could go from there.
Other questions?
I just have one. On your chart of like low, mid and high and the novice and whatever, so how does that translate to, you know, students who are in, who are just Spanish speakers? I mean, so where, so like a low or like a, like a mid, high or whatever here, where, where would they be if they were second graders, you know, in, you know, you know, just a Spanish speaking.
Native Spanish speaking country?
Yeah.
Or, or native speakers. It's really interesting because if you looked closely at the Actul, you could even, you could test it for any language. You could test it for English. And so it's really about that natural language development, increasing academic vocabulary in their language is one of those things that our native speakers still need to develop. The academic vocabulary is something that is learned throughout school for any student. And so that's one of the major components. Also, Actul measures six different categories, not just speaking, but reading and writing, presentational writing, presentational speaking, conversational or interpersonal communication. So there's a lot of development that happens naturally in a child in any language that those steps up provide what that language would look like.
Can I answer a question?
I can add if you, if you need.
Can you clarify what she was referring?
Yeah, language proficiency has different subcategories, what she was talking about. So for a native Spanish speaker, they will speak, but they will, throughout the years, they will add to their vocabulary as any child will be adding to their vocabulary. So our curriculum will increase their proficiency in their language and in different categories as a oral, writing, communication. There's many ways that they can increase their, their knowledge.
Right, so it's, I mean, a, a second grader anywhere needs to learn certain scientific words that, you know, there's, I mean, they just need to learn them, whatever. So I, I understand that. Thank you. That clarifies. Thank you.
Other questions?
Sure.
Yes. We know it will soar. We just saw that on the last one.
No lo tengo. En el teal lo tiene?
Si no te.
Okay. James, ¿qué tienes?
Yo, che. En mi zapato tengo una canela y un chocolate.
Alejandro, ¿qué tienes?
En mi zapato tengo un pie.
Six.
¿Diez?
No.
Six.
No.
¿Siete?
No.
¿Yo dice? Es seis.
¿Ellos?
Ellos.
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 No lo tengo.
No lo tengo.
¿En el teal lo tiene?
Si no te.
Ah!
Okay. James, ¿qué tienes?
Yo, che. En mi zapato tengo una canela y un chocolate.
Alejandro, ¿qué tienes?
En mi zapato tengo un pie.
¡Ay!
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 So, one of the biggest things I love about Spanish immersion is that I do a lot of the math work with these kids and the mistakes that they make, which are very few, are really only those that you would expect of anyone else in this age group because they're in second grade. And they're learning an entirely new language at the same time because they do it all in Spanish. And that's amazing to me. It's an opportunity I wish I would have had in elementary school. And they're also just incredibly fluent. I remember I was intimidated when I came in on the first day because they know so much more than me and I've taken, you know, several years of Spanish and they are already incredibly fluent and it's amazing to just talk to them and hear them speak to one another. And I just love this program so much.
¡Cuarenta y dos porque cinco por siete es treinta y cinco y treinta y cinco más siete porque es seis por siete ahora es cuarenta y dos. ¡Español! ¡Eres la mejor!
That's the end of our presentation for you tonight. Thank you for having us at the board meeting. And we look forward to our program growing and we look forward to seeing our results as our kids take their tests this year at MCA reading and math. We look forward to having visitors. We love having visitors at Gage and in our Spanish immersion program. So you can see the kids in action. That's why the video was so important tonight for you to see. But please come and visit our programming and spend some time in the classroom with our students and our teachers. It's a wonderful program and we'd like for you to be there. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Workman.
Now, one quick question. You just answered the question I was going to ask, but do, can we just show up or do you want us to make an appointment ahead of time?
Come on in, check in and we'll take you down. Yeah, we'd love to have you.
Thank you for waiting.
Thank you. 3.05 Washington Blue Ribbon School, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I'm going to have Chad and Diane come up and talk a bit about the recent award.
Chair Marvin, school board members, Superintendent Munoz and Ms. Edgar, Diane Fritcher and I are very humbled to share with you the news that Washington Elementary was recognized as an exemplary high performing school, National Blue Ribbon School for 2017 by university, or excuse me, the United States Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos. The National Blue Ribbon Award affirms the hard work of our students, our staff, families and communicates and creates a safe and welcoming school where students master challenging content. As you recall or may have heard, Washington has received this prestigious award back in 2007, so this is the second time that we've received this award. Washington was one of eight schools in Minnesota and one of 342 schools nationwide this year to receive that award. And we were very honored to be a part of the process along with Superintendent Munoz back in November to receive that award in Washington DC.
And I would just like to add a sincere thank you. A thank you for us having the opportunity to go and celebrate, but also a thank you for us to have the opportunity to go and take in the staff development from the Department of Education, the networking with exceptional educators from across the United States. And in that, a thank you for all that we have right here in Rochester because what it brought to me was that we have really exceptional schools and really exceptional support systems through staff development, through initiatives, through all that's going in, going on in our schools. So thank you very much for that.
Mr. Barlow.
Is it possible for you to share maybe one or two things that are, that you're doing at Washington that drew the attention of the Department of Education to award you this distinguished?
There's two different awards that you could receive. One was the high exemplary award that we received and then the other one was the closing the achievement cap. Some of the things that we, we do at our school that we truly believe that is a success and obviously can't maybe be replicated throughout the district, but our small school setting I think is a huge proponent for us that we are able to really get to know our kids on a consistent basis K through five, but also the low mobility that we have, being a district-wide option school, to have our kids with us no matter where they live in the city, kindergarten through fifth grade, to be with us, to know those kids, know those families and to, just to build those relationships with those families so that we can really meet the needs of those unique kids that we get.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
3.06 2017, 2018 School Board Committee Assignments Updates. In addition to coming to school board meetings, our board members are on a variety of different district committees and I'm wondering if any have information, experiences they'd like to share. Mr. Flusner.
At the last Oppsycan Youth Commission meeting, a continued discussion around mental health and they had a request for actually Jane to come and talk to them. You know, the Oppsycan Youth Commission again is larger than just Rochester Public Schools, but it's a, it's a group of students around Rochester and there's actually the county as a whole. And they do spend a lot of time talking about mental health in the schools, curriculum, stuff of the sort. And I'll send an email to Jane after meetings and she's unfortunately not here tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Workman.
Yes, as you know, quite a number of us had the opportunity to attend the Minnesota School Board Association Annual Conference last week and I would like to just share if I may a couple of sessions that I attended and what I took away from it. I'm very interested in what happens at the legislative letter, level with school boards and funding and those kinds of things. But in addition to that, there are some issues that the MSBA is kind of zeroing in on that will help our districts. For example, one of them is to align the world's best workforce statute with the Every Student Succeeds Act to create one statewide accountability system. So right now we have two systems and they're not quite lined up and it makes for an awful lot of work and I seen the ceiling over there, not in your head, you're very much familiar with this. So that, that's a big one. Another area is more resources for cybersecurity, protecting students, staff and parents with secure electronic systems. secure electronic systems. Pathway 2 scholarships play an important role in increasing the access to high quality preschool for Minnesota's neediest early learners and funding should be restored and increased for that. Another one that is important is changing the ballot language. For example, if we have a referendum that the public needs to vote on, that, for example, if we had a building referendum, if we were to have some of our buildings paid off, that tax would go down and a new building potentially would equal what we had been paying. The ballot language as it stands now says that it will increase your taxes even if it doesn't. So, we're asking for clarification on that. And then finally, teacher shortages continue to be an issue and we're working on alternative pathways to attract non-traditional students into the teaching profession. And the MSBA would like to expand the Grow Your Own program to rural school districts as well. The other big one that I'd like to highlight is the Special Education Cross Subsidy, which is the difference between what schools expend for special education versus what they actually receive from the state and federal government. So, statewide, there's a gap of $679 million and that gap is expected to grow. In Rochester, it's about $18 million gap. So, if you look at your school board committee assignments update, I have two resolutions that I would like to bring forward to. One is for, for the state and one is for federal. And basically, they, they have the same, the same goal. So, on the state education or the state resolution, it, it's urging that the Minnesota Legislature convene a task force to work on special education funding and the things that I just mentioned with the cross subsidy. And MSBA is asking all school boards to present a resolution for us to vote on as to whether or not we would like to add our name to sending this to our legislators. The federal one is very similar, which would call upon Congress to pass appropriate legislation in order to decrease funding for special education mandates to meet the urgent financial special education needs of our cities and towns. So, those two are, resolutions are not yet part of the agenda, but if someone is willing to make an amendment to add them to the agenda, that would be great.
So moved. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that these two items be added to the agenda. And that's my stupid phone, sorry. A little bit embarrassing. Kids, you keep your cell phones turned off. You've done a much better job than I have. I apologize. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed. Added to the agenda. Now we vote.
You have to read the resolution. So, do one and then do the other one.
Okay, we'll begin then with the resolution about federal funds. Therefore be it resolved that we urge the President and Legislature to strenuously advocate for significant increases in federal special education funding and meaningful special education reforms at the federal and state levels and now therefore be it resolved that the state of Minnesota calls upon the Congress of the United States to pass appropriate legislation in order to increase funding for federal special education mandates to meet the urgent financial and special education needs of our cities and towns and be it further resolved that the Secretary of State cause a copy of this resolution to be delivered to all United States representatives and senators representing Minnesota in the Congress of the United States. Motion?
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Becker.
So, Julie, or so MSBA wanted all school districts to come up with their own, so is this your own language? Is this MSBA's language?
No, this is, this is MSBA's language and they have written the, all the wherethes as you've seen as well in the resolution. And the idea is to just have a really good showing from school boards across Minnesota that this is really extremely important to all of our districts because every district in Minnesota has a big financial stake with special education that we just cannot keep up with the needs that our students present.
So, I mean, I know, you know, some of the special ed issues are that, you know, that they're the unfunded or partially funded mandates. So, has MSBA also, I mean, I know this is for money. I mean, have they, have they also talked about maybe relaxing some of the, you know, having the legislatures actually relax some of the mandates and say, you know, you can choose some of those? So, I mean, is that part of the discussion or?
That's not specifically part of this resolution.
I, I realize that-
It might be a solution, though. It might be a solution.
Well, it would certainly help and I, and I know that-
And Ms. Karla here. Please correct me if I'm wrong, I think there is some discussion at the state level as to reducing some of the special education mandates that you've found maybe not quite so necessary.
The state has many mandates and there's many more mandates than the federal government does. So, Superintendent Munoz is actually looking at all the mandates that are extra from Minnesota.
Yeah, actually, I'm on the area metro school districts legislative committee and also our state superintendent's legislative committee and that is on both agendas mainly. Last time, last year, we asked to develop a long-term plan to reduce that gap and it didn't get many legs and I can tell you for the area metro school districts stance, last year, we had the chair of the Senate and House, both the finance and the policy committee and they pretty much just said there is no extra money to address the, the gap. So, are, we switched our, our approach to looking at the, there's, I don't remember exact number, but there's many additional state mandates that go beyond the federal requirements. So, our approach is to look at those and try to eliminate some of them and not all of them have a financial impact, but some do. So, I know both groups are taking that approach and then I've even have spoken with Senator Nelson and she's asked me to look at the mandates and which ones to bring to her that we'd recommend that we eliminate. So, Carla's department is in process of doing that. So, that's the approach we're taking and then we're also working with a few other districts like Duluth and I think Many Talka, I think it was, St. Cloud and trying to draft a couple bills that target more charter schools because right now, the way it's written now, a special ed student in a charter school, they can put anything they want in the IEP and then they send us the bill. So, one of the things that we're asking is can we be at the table when during that IEP security one change or can we be part of the process when they create that IEP? So, those groups have tried, have tried to attack it that way. I think it's good to keep this on the table. Honestly, I don't think it'll have much impact at the state level. I think maybe at the federal level, there might be some opportunities there. But I think anything we can, time we can keep it in the forefront of legislators' mind is good. But in all reality, I think attacking the mandates and trying to eliminate some of those and, and at a future meeting, you'll hear a little more specifically about charter schools and how it's impacting our district in not a good way. Probably just going to have an impact on our financial forecast for the next five years. So, I think that's one that we really wanted to target as well. But I think it's, anytime you can keep this into mind at the federal or state level, I think it's a good thing because it's, it's huge. I mean, for those of you in the audience who don't know what we're talking about, they don't, we don't get 100% funding for special ed students. So, in order to make up the difference, we use our general fund budget. And for this year, it's, it's around about $18 million that we take out of our general fund because the state and federal funding doesn't match the actual cost for that student. So, then you have to, and it's, it's an issue that everybody's dealing with across the state of Minnesota. Districts like us that provide more special ed programming have, have a bigger cost than maybe some of the smaller districts around us, but it is something that they're experiencing as well.
Mr. Smith.
So, you know, I think this, the resolution's great, encourage you to pass that, but I think it also might have an impact if every school board member in this state would show up on the steps of the legislature to show that, you know, that we're unified about this. I mean, we're all elected officials, they're elected officials and we would outnumber them if we were all up there. And I don't think you can underestimate the impact of, you know, taking a little activism here as well. And if I, Superintendent Munoz, I think it costs our district $18 million a year.
This year.
This year alone. So, it's, it's a big number.
So, is that, is that, I'm sorry, is that 18 million if, total for the budget for special ed or is it, or is it over?
That's the gap.
That's the gap.
Oh, that's the gap. That's the gap.
Everything, transportation and everything.
We're spending more than, we're spending more than that. It's 18 million is what we're having to pay above and for the mandate.
Yeah. That's a huge number.
Mr. Barrow.
I support Director Becker's initial inquiry and that was whether or not MSBA had actually developed a resolution to look at the reduction of the mandates, if I followed that correctly. It's understood that it's not a part of this resolution. And perhaps we could encourage you as a delegate, Director Workman, to recommend to MSBA that they consider developing a resolution that will begin that process of looking at the reduction of the mandates that the state requires of us and, and I fully support moving on the recommendation before us.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I believe the, the resolution that is on the table at the moment is the one for the federal.
Yes.
So, all of this discussion does not pertain to the federal resolution. It will pertain to the next one, which is concerns Minnesota, but in order to answer the question, well, I'll answer that when we get to the next resolution instead of adding it here. So, it's the federal resolution that's, that's on the table right now.
Motion's been made and seconded. If there's no more discussion, call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The second motion, resolution to fully fund special education services in Minnesota. Therefore be it resolved that we urge the governor and legislature to strenuously advocate for significant increases in federal special education funding and meaningful special education reforms at the federal and state levels and now therefore be it resolved that there is an urgency, the Minnesota Legislature, to convene a task force to work on special education funding, specifically with a focus on the impacts of the new special education funding formulas that projected cross subsidy and recommendations with the timeline to eliminate the cross subsidy. I'm going to make the motion.
Move approval.
Second. Any discussion?
So, I think in this, to answer everybody else's question concerning the mandates and what we might do, one of the, the big thing in this one is also to convene a task force to work on the special education funding and I'm, I'm very confident that this will be a big part of that discussion in terms of how can we align our special education requirements with the state, with the federal government and perhaps have some cost savings there.
Other questions, comments? Okay, the motion's been read and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any other reports from committee assignments? I have one. Julie Workman has been the board chair for the last year. She has served incredibly well. She is an amazingly dedicated person and has provided tremendous leadership. And on behalf of the Rochester Public School System, I would like to present Ms. Workman with this plaque, including, I, I think it's a genuine gold gavel. Let's go with that.
Let's, yeah.
Okay, we'll just say that for your great work. Congratulations, I think. Moving on to 4.0, the consent agenda. This is an action item. Are there any items that individuals want to remove for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Yes, I, I would like to call the attention to the board, a couple individuals that were in the consent. First, honoring the passing of Mula Getta, who's a minor, who was a minority liaison for 18 years for the district. Most of those were at Mayo High School. And also in the retirement section, you'll notice that Nancy Denzer, currently the principal at Willow Creek Middle School, is retiring at the end of this year. She has worked for the district, it'll be 19 years end of this year, so congratulations to Nancy.
Thank you. High student achievement, 5.01, approval of the Flexible Learning Year or FLY program for Longfellow Elementary School. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I don't have a formal presentation. This is something we have to do every three years to apply, to have the 4515 calendar. So, it's that time of the year again to apply for our next three years. So, just going through the process of getting approval from MDE to do the 4515 for three more years.
And I think it would be wise to move this to action. Minnesota Department of Education needs to get this approval soon, so I entertain a motion to move this to be an action item.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this is an action item and the resolution is on here. Okay. My phone was ringing and my computer turned off, so it's been one of those, one of those days. Yes. Okay. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the Flexible Learning Year FLY application for Longfellow Elementary for the 2018, 2019, 2019, 2020 and 2020, 2021 school years.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Efficient and Effective Operations, 7.01, approval of proposals for the Mayo High School roof. This is an action item, Mr. Munoz. I'm going to read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the proposal from Merritt Roofing in amount of $1,154,541 for Area C of the Mayo High School Roof Project.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Oh, thank you. 7.02, rejection of bid package 23A for early childhood addition and indoor air quality project at Hoover Elementary. This is a briefing item.
Yes, at this time, I'll call Scott Sheridan, Executive Director, Facilities, to brief us on this item.
Good evening, board members. I'm here to brief you on a request to reject bid package 23A for the early childhood addition and indoor air quality project at Hoover. As I'm sure you remember, on May 16th of 2017, you approved the 3,000, or 36,000 square foot early childhood addition at Hoover Elementary. And on September 5th, you approved the Phase 1 competitive bids. On November 21st of 2017, you approved the 22, Phase 2 bid packages and the two best value proposals that were valued at over $3 million. As I had stated at that board meeting on the 21st, we had pulled out package 23A, which was for the boiler system, out of the Phase 2 bid packages and the amount of that was $200,500 from RM Cotton Company. The intent at the time was to have our engineer during the design to research if there was a way to improve some efficiencies and reduce some costs with the boiler system. And they went back, did some redesign and they came up with a, a better package that we would like to rebid once this bid is rejected. The initial bid, 23A, was for two 6,000 BTU boilers and the engineer has determined that if we move to three 3,000 BTU boilers, it'll improve the efficiency and redundancy of the heating system for the school or the addition and potentially save us some costs. Now, we don't have an absolute number yet on the costs, obviously, until we get the bids back when we rebid for the three, 3,000 BTU boilers, but we do need you to reject the original 23A bid package for the two 6,000 BTU boilers in the amount of- the original 23A bid package for the two 6,000 BTU boilers in the amount of $200,500.
So, Mr. Sheridan, since this is a rejection of a bid, I'm assuming it would be efficacious if we could just act on this tonight?
That would be wonderful, yes.
Move to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to an action item.
Any discussion?
Oh, thank you. Too much water. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of moving this to an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 rejects bid package 23A in the amount of $200,500 for the Early Childhood Edition and Indoor, Indoor Air Quality Project at Hoover Elementary.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Becker.
So Scott, who, like, how did this process start that, you know, someone thought, well, hey, let's look at three instead of two? I mean, I know you said the engineer, but so, like, where in the process did that happen? What was, you know, how did it come along?
It all started when we got the original bid back in early November, and we saw what the costs were. We thought that if we took a look at reengineering, or having the engineer look at the systems again, that we could potentially, like I said, improve the efficiency and reduce the cost, because we knew that we were over, as I had stated before, on the project, and so we were looking for ways to reduce the cost. And that's what, where we started looking. So the engineer did go back and look, and was able to determine that the use of three of the smaller boilers would actually, if one goes down, then we still have two remaining that would still be able to heat the building, because those boilers tend to have some maintenance to them, and we have to take them down occasionally. So, that's what started it all, early November.
So was it, it's in construction that maybe brought this to your attention?
You're absolutely right. It was the construction manager that reviewed the bid, and their advice to us was to take another look at this.
Okay. Would a similar analogy be that, for example, instead of having one 80-gallon hot water heater in your house, it might be better to have two 40-water, two 40-gallon water heaters?
That's a...
Or is that a stretch?
Depending on how much water usage you have, but...
Right, right.
But ideally, yes, then you would always have hot water, because you have that redundancy built in.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And now, this meeting is adjourned at 6:43 PM.